I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for the Village of Pinehurst of August 4, 2022. The time is four o'clock on the dot. I'll point out that we have six members of the board present, and I'll ask them each to introduce themselves, beginning on my right with Paul.
Jack Farrell.
David Elzamora.
Louise Mencuro.
Sonia Rustine.
In absent today, we have Matt Jones and Philip Schumaker. And staff with us today, we have Darren Burridge, and we have Alfred Cassidy and Maria Carpenter. Welcome, everybody. We will be following the agenda, and the first item on the agenda today is the approval of minutes. We have two minutes to approve. The first is minutes from our regular meeting July 7, 2022. Does anybody have any amendments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the July 7, 2022, regular meeting.
Motion made by David, second by Louise. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes from the July 7, 2022, regular meeting are approved as written. The second minutes that we need to approve are from July 21, 2022. There has been a staff revision for those minutes. The revisions are on page two, to read that blocks I and K have no change to building heights, and that's, so feel free to read that verbiage. And if there are any other changes, additions, or corrections, I'll ask for those now. Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as revised for the July 21, 2022 meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the July 21, 2022, special meeting as revised.
Second.
Motion made by Jack, second by Sonia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, the July 21, 2022, special meeting minutes are approved as revised.
So now we'll move on to new business. We're going to discuss the Village Place Form-Based Codes and zoning updates. I will point out that this is a work session meeting for our board today, and there will be no action taken. Darren?
I'm up.
You're up.
All right. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? All right. All right, so today, we're going to talk a little bit about the architectural standards, which is, as you've started to wade through it, it is a very, there's a lot of material out there, they're very specific. We're going to get into that, and it's broken into two sections, commercial, mixed use, and then residential. We're going to focus on commercial today. Before we go to that, what I'd like to do is, we talked about the regulating plan last time. We've made some adjustments. I looked at it, I missed a couple of things. We've updated, we've updated the regulating plan. I just kind of want to go through that regulating plan, because this document is very important for what we're trying to achieve in this area. And I think there's a couple of things that I, at some point, I do, or we can revisit it now, and one of them's the active frontage requirements. And I think we've got a pretty, I think we had a pretty good consensus on the types of building forms that were going to be in each of these blocks. But let me, so you all have the, you all have it handed out there? Good. So with the regulating plan, we made some, well, first of all, before we start, there was a question on the building types. And in particular, I was asked about, well, what's the difference between cottage, villa, and manor? And basically, that's going to be the size of the, it's going to be the size of the lot and the size of the house on that lot. So cottages are a little bit smaller, think of a typical cottage lot, maybe 50 to 60 feet, different type of building architecture, and then all the way up to a manor. And that, when we start to talk about those lots, that might be where the garage is placed and things like that. So when we get to that, that will be, when we get to that, we'll discuss that a little bit more in depth. But that is the basic difference. It's going to be, it's really the density, it's really the size of the dwelling on the lot. Any questions on that? Jack, anybody?
Well, how will that manifest itself in the end? For example, are we saying that if we see a certain lot, and we know the size of the lot, or the parcel, we will only allow certain-sized dwellings, either cottage, manor, or villa, whatever it may be?
When we get to the lot standards, so if we, so if, say we go into the lot, you know, if we go into block O, which is the Village Residential, where the townhouses have been approved previously, whether it be, if we're looking, if somebody wants to propose a manor type, or a manor type, so that would be a wider lot with a slightly different architectural style than maybe a cottage lot. So that's, that's the basic premise, how that would work.
So within, within a zone, single-family residential area, we can also specify the, essentially, the size of the residence?
No. No.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, what's going to, you're going to be limited by, somewhat, you're going to be limited by, by set, the size of a lot can limit the size of the house.
I understand that, yeah. The building envelope will only be a certain size.
Correct.
But, so regardless of the size of the lot, if we say it's single-family residential, then you're free to build a cottage, manor, and/or, I forget the third category.
Villa.
Villa.
Villa. I think when we, let's get to those standards first before, because I haven't, we haven't done, we haven't shared those standards with you yet. I think when we share the standards, which would probably, which is going to either be next week, the next session, or the other, you'll understand, it'll be easier to understand, because that's pulled up into the, into the lot standards. So a villa is a, a villa is a certain-sized lot, a manor is a certain-sized lot, and a cottage is a certain-sized lot.
Okay. Now wait and see. Thank you.
I know you're excited. All right, so, so I'll go over, so for the, for those of you who weren't here last time, the regulating plan really is kind of a, it's a, it's a hybrid between a land use plan and a building form plan. And what, and what you have before you is Village Place kind of broken out into various blocks. Those various blocks have, have a building type that, that will, that we're recommending be in a certain block, as well as a building height. It's either going to be a minimum height, or a, it's both a minimum and a maximum height. So if you go into a block that has a minimum, says 2, 3, the minimum height in that block is two stories high. So, and the other, the other important factor in this is if you look at the red, the red line, those are, those are what's called active street frontages. And an active street frontage is a, will require the building that's placed on that site, on that frontage, to incorporate, and if you look on the left side, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 4th paragraph down, it says, additionally, the regulating plan indicates where active frontage is required. That is where retail or restaurant space, lobbies, or building amenities must be located on the ground floor facing the street. So the idea is it livens the streetscape, it provides more interest and variety, more storefronts, things like that. So you can see, when you go into the, kind of that core area of, between blocks A, B, C, and D, that is really, you see active frontage all around that. So that is the idea, is that, you know, those areas where the active frontage is, that's where you're trying to enliven the streetscape with, with more active type uses. Think about, think about Chincopin, you know, think, or, you know, think about Cherokee, I'm sorry, Cherokee. Think about the Village Center, and those uses that are, that are in, on Market Street. They have an active street frontage with retail users, some office users, but retail, shops, things like that. So at, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, we actually adjusted some of the active frontages. And if you look down over by Magnolia, so in front of block B, in front of block B before, we didn't have an active frontage on that, and that's, that's over by the Telco, the Telco Company. We added, or recommended that we add an active frontage there, so if that building does go through a period of redevelopment at some point in the future, they would have to have an active frontage. Right now, they don't have really any frontage, other than you can see a storage yard and a building. I mean, that's really about it. So if that does go through a period of redevelopment, Magnolia is where you'd have that frontage. The other area where we did add it, and we had some discussion on this, and I'm kind of double-thinking it, was block G, along, between blocks G and F, so McIntyre. So Don McIntyre, from McCaskill up to Kelly, we recommended adding an active frontage. And my thought on that, I don't know if we've gone too far with that by taking it up to Kelly or not, I think it's something we might want to revisit, because as I look, as you get to the corner of, you know, say Kelly and McIntyre, you've got to the, kind of, to the east and north, you've got residential neighborhood, and just to the north, you have a residential neighborhood. So we'd be, we'd be potentially requiring a more active use at that corner. So that's, that's the one thing I, you know, I might want to revisit that, or we might want to revisit that from the boundaries up, so you see where F is on, on the Clark property. So if, it's really that little section there, is whether that should, should we maintain that as active frontage all the way to, all the way to Kelly.
Hey Darren. Normally.
Which is right here, I'm sorry.
Normally, would an active frontage terminate or end kind of on a corner block? Or is there ever any reason to maybe terminate it mid-block, anything like that?
I think based on what, what the uses are, you know, planned or existing across the street from it, I think it's, I personally think it's appropriate. Because what, you don't want to put an active frontage on, potentially on something that's going to be a bunch of residential, so it's just, it's, it's, or existing residential.
So what would that look like, or an example of, to where it would terminate, maybe, let's say, mid-block going to a residential area? I'm sure that would change possibly the, the depth, or obviously what was controlled right in the front of the active frontage, and then we would go straight to a residential. Can you give a full idea about how that would flow?
How that would flow?
Well, I'm just thinking, so in my mind, if I'm thinking commercial building, active frontage, large sidewalk for pedestrian traffic, and then we end, I guess, at the end of the, whatever building would be there, and then a home next door, I'm guessing there might be some sort of setback also change as well, right?
You mean to the, so if, let's take that out to the corner of Kelly and McIntyre.
Yep.
So if we put a building out there, so you're at, so you're not going to have, bumper requirements don't apply across the street, right, Alex? I mean, do they, they currently apply across the street? So we'd have to have, with our current PDO, we'd have to have buffer requirements to the, to the east, and then to the north, which is going to affect the land form in that area, so we have to consider that. So the flow currently with the PDO would require a setback, would require a buffer, would require a buffer along McIntyre and a buffer along Kelly Road, correct? So right now, the way that works is we'd have, I think we have to evaluate that a little bit more. I mean, right now, I think there's two small apartment buildings on that corner, but it, you know, if something happens, they could come down, and you could, it's all zoned NC, so, NC, and we have, what do we have, mixed use, office, retail, live work. So how would, you know, how is the existing PDO requirements going to impact on that? How does it buffer? And that, that's a good question. Right now, it's going to push it off the corner, so I think that's going to be a concern.
Thanks.
Are you saying that this, what we're seeing here, this does not have all the updates that we did from the last session on it?
I said, I missed something, and I'm going to go over that, because there's a couple, there's a couple misses on that, Jack.
Okay. What I'm saying is that, I mean, it doesn't even have the different building types, they're not the same.
What do you mean? I updated, we updated all the building types based on our, based on our last conversation. Where did, where did we miss a building type?
Well, in, in block A.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I can't really quite honestly read it. What's this say in front of me on the, on the screen here? 1, 3, and?
1, 3, and 4, you should have the updated one right there, too.
All right, I had, for some reason or another, I had scratched out 4, and it says, right here in the notes, the minutes, it says, block A limited to 1 and 3.
We included the 4 because there was all the talk about our 3 and 4, I'm sorry, our, 1 and 4 are essentially the same thing, mixed use and live work. That was what, so pretty much if there was a mixed use, we were including the 4s, live work, or if we're going to look at maybe combining the two into just one building type.
Notes, I mean, our minutes say was limited to 1 and 3, and yet here it says 1, 3.
Jack, that it wasn't missing on our part. I mean, that, that's it.
We clearly talked about that.
We can pull that out. I remember talking about it, but, too, I had, we used to have, the original had 9 in it, right?
Yeah, you had the hotel in there, yes.
And we pulled, and we pulled the hotel out there, so there was some discussion on 4, especially when, when we went along that crossroad. So along that crossroad, we went live work, but if, if we're allowing a mixed use and retail, that'd be fine. So that was, I don't know, frankly, that's a miss.
Or is it?
I'm just concerned that there's some inconsistencies in what we're looking at here, and our minutes from our meeting, and my notes, too, although my notes don't override the minutes from the meeting. So, all right, well, let's go back, let's go back to the active frontage. When we talked about acrid, act, active frontage for block F, maybe I'm wrong, please, someone jump in and tell me I'm all, I'm wrong here, but on, on F, we talked to active frontage, yes, on McIntyre, but I, my notes indicate that we only indicated the active frontage would be to the extent of the small-area-plan boundary, which is not taking it all the way to Kelly.
Well, my notes are somewhat garbled. Who else had notes on that? Alex, do you recall? Anybody else who was there recall that discussion? Did we just end it at, did we just end it at that?
But you bring up a good point relative to whether it makes sense to extend the active frontage all the way into what is really a residential area.
I agree.
Add on the question mark label.
I agree.
My other question mark is, did we discuss the active frontage on, it would be McCaskill, I guess, between F and E?
F and E. Oh, you, do you mean along McCaskill between?
Yes.
Between McIntyre and Dundee there?
Yeah, right. McCaskill, when it goes from McIntyre to Dundee.
And I, we must have went into that discussion, because, and I don't have anything showing to remove that from active frontage. I think this was one of those weird situations where, when we looked at that, when you look at the core area, we're trying to focus, you know, that retail and pedestrian activity down towards the center. So I think the idea was if we have a building development on this block, that we wanted to focus the pedestrian.
It in towards the core rather than outwards.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. Let me, I'll have two other concerns, and I'll shut up for a while.
Don't shut up.
The, the other question I asked you, which we really didn't discuss, which is, if there's an active frontage on one lot, does that lead over to require active frontage on the lot across the street? For example, we put active frontage on, on M, also active frontage on F, does that mean lot G will have active frontage for the portion of that lot which fronts towards the lots that have active frontage?
Yes.
In other words, you're forcing that active frontage on both sides of the street regardless?
Correct.
Okay, so as long as we?
Because you're trying to align both sides of the street.
I just didn't know that that was the case. My other comment, and my last comment, is that I think we're overdoing the active frontage thing. And the reason I say that is that active frontage means we're expecting retail and restaurants and so forth, and a, and a pedestrian-type environment, and yet, and we have, which I agree 100% in the core zone should be, you know, promoted to the extent possible. But the village has struggled with retail storefront for a long, long time, as long as I can remember, and whether or not we're actually overdoing the requirement for retail, storefront, and restaurant, and so forth, it's worthy of discussion compared to the size of the village, the potential number of candidates there are to populate these storefronts and so forth. So it's just something that I think that ought to be discussed in some detail before we get carried away with active frontage.
I agree. And that was one of my concerns when we added that frontage down McIntyre. I, I do think that's, you know, there, I was looking at that, and when you look at it, could you do something, could you do limited frontage and go 50% of it, 25% of it, something like that? So I was thinking about that potentially, you know, along Rattlesnake, or McCaskill, or McIntyre. So I think it's, I think that's open for discussion. I think, I think you're absolutely right. I think, you know, are we overdoing it with requiring that in those areas?
Well, I think it needs to be revisited, whether it needs to be revisited in this session, or we can table it and ponder it, and maybe come back to it later on. I think it's worthy of discussion.
And I think we need to isolate those areas that we're really talking about, so I think you're right. The other miss, Jack, that we, that I, that I missed, too, was if you go up to block H, that's it, we moved that down to two stories, so we went to 1 to 2.
Yeah, there's a couple of them of those, yep.
Yeah, and the other one, which, this map, if you go to block E, it kind of shows that there's a, I can't read that. If you look at block E, you can see it's, it kind of looks like a jumble on the right-hand side of that. We actually took out, we took out 5. It looks funny, I corrected it in our update, but our, we had landed on building forms, 2, office, 3, retail, and 4, live work, I believe. Does anybody recall?
3 and 4, that's what it says in the minutes, I'm going by the minutes, which is, corresponds to my notes.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Sure.
I'm curious as to why the active frontage isn't extended down McCaskill to Magnolia, since A and D have the same characteristics, and D has an active frontage, but A doesn't.
Because of N? Because isn't it both sides of the street that have to match?
Well, typically it would if you had the same uses on either side of it, so if you're, if you had, N is the, N is the apartments over there, so you're not going to get an active frontage on the apartments?
Office and retail.
No.
Oh, that's stories, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but here, this lot is not any different from that lot.
But this lot is different from this lot.
Yeah, but suppose they come in and say, you know, we want to have an office or something, why would they object to having that active frontage?
I mean, just knowing that lot, it's already developed.
Yeah.
It's relatively new.
Oh, okay, I missed it. I just think A ought to be treated the same as D, that's all.
Let's, as Jack said, we should probably revisit that, we'll do a special topic on the, I, I don't disagree, we need to, I think we need to talk about it, but again, like, and Jack raised a great point, are we, are we overdoing it? But, you know, we're trying to get down to core and focus that area into that core.
I look at A and D as being treated the same, it's A and N that are treated differently.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and, yeah, I think extending the, because extending the active, the way I'm understanding, extending that active frontage all the way to Magnolia on McCaskill, that would then require N to?
I wonder if they're going to change something.
Well, yeah, but.
David, let me, let me point that out. So if we go down to block A, between block A and block O, so if you go on the west side, when you see the type of uses that, that we had recommended in that area, which is five, you know, which is 5 townhouse, 6 cottage, 7 villa, and 8 manor, you can't have an active frontage on that side, so.
Right, right.
Even, even, so even if we had that happen, the, the use on the other side is going to dictate that there's not going to be an active frontage. However, that doesn't mean things won't change, you know, zoning can change, everything can change, so this act, this would require that something changes in the future, that to a non-residential on the west side, that an active frontage would be required.
All right, is it impossible to only have one side of the street made active frontage?
I think.
Between A and N, if it's on A side of the, of the street?
No, because what you do is you would just, you would simply extend that, that active frontage down to Magnolia, and the active frontage requirement, while it would apply to both sides of the block, it's going to only apply in effect on, on the south side of the block on A, because that's the only spot where you're going to get any new development anytime in the near future. So you have the old laundry site, and you have that, that small commercial building, there's, there's a small commercial building at the corner, I think there's another commercial building there, and you have the, the county, the county services over there. So if that goes to redevelop, what you would do is that, that would create, that would force that active frontage on McCaskill in that area.
If I own lot D, though, I might question why I have that restriction and lot A does not.
I think part of the reason is, you know, if I'm looking at that, I'm looking at, you're going down a hill, the traffic is carrying generally pretty quick down McCaskill to, is going down to the east, maybe from that perspective, I, I'd have to think about that some more.
Okay.
It's worth, it's worth some thought, I think we, we need to have a sec, a session to talk a little bit more about active frontage. Any other questions, basically? Because we, we spent a lot of time going over building types, and things like that, and, and another part of the refresher is, the building types are one thing, we're also going, we're also going through and creating, each block is going to then, we're going to then further limit uses in the blocks, limit or allow uses in each of the blocks. So there's going to be a, there's going to be a table that will be associated with this, and everything's going to break down by block. So for example, when we had run this thing through the council in that area of Rattlesnake, so you're, you're looking at blocks really I and K, there is a preference that we keep that as office. So what you look at is, we'd start to look at the, the types of general office uses that could be in that area versus, you know, more retail uses, things like that. So there was just a preference that we keep that type of use and preserve those offices for that area, so potentially you could put medical offices, things like that.
Hey Darren.
We're working on that.
Would, would active frontage in any way affect any homeowner's ability to pull a permit for any sort of remodeling situation for the, the single-family dwelling that they currently have? So there's no effect upon that, so we shouldn't be as worried about the house across from Clark's.
Nope.
Okay, good. And I, and I think that as our board, as we learn a little bit more about how active frontage interacts and could possibly change some of the other topics that we continue discussing here, we may need to come back to it a couple of times. So I think some of this is, is healthy conversation, kind of like what Jack brought up.
It is.
And I, and if I seem to recall, I think we did talk about it going to Kelly, but I'm not so sure we ever definitively made that decision.
Might, and.
So it's a fair conversation as well.
I've got some clarification on that particular project. By going through, looking at our notes, it looks like we extended it, the active frontage that is, from McCaskill to that corner there at that boundary, the Clark property, not going to Kelly.
Okay, okay, yeah, great.
Well, there you go.
Well, I just think that's, I think it's healthy, and I think it's important, you know, as we kind of move this, certainly because I think we discussed a lot of different changes during our last meeting, and they kind of flow through you.
And, and what the group discussed two weeks ago, and what the minutes reflect from two weeks ago, are only from that meeting two weeks ago.
That's a good point.
Darren said, things are, it's going to evolve, we may come back, and there might need to be changes made to this later. But just while I've got your?
It's going to be living.
Yeah.
This entire process, this will be living.
As I've got your attention real quick, so I, I see that block O is no longer divided, so is that a change that, that staff has made based upon our last meeting?
That's, yeah, and I, and I've noted that, and actually, when I updated this map, I put a big circle around that going forward, because that's a discussion point that we have to have a council at some point. But yeah, I mean, we, we did take out, if you look at block O, before we had that divided out, and based on our conversation, you know, and some of the, some of the difficulties potentially with transitioning on that lot, we took out the boundary, combined the lot, and put all, and put those type of uses, 5, 6, 7, and 8, within that area. So that, that's a point that we'll have to, that we'll have to elevate to council and discuss with council at some point.
Okay. But I think whatever your next topic is, I think it's healthy to possibly, for Stephen, if we need to jump back and discuss this at a couple of different points in the future, maybe we just plan to do so.
I think the other thing may want to look at, too, is in that area there, that's the most relief or contour in Pinehurst, right? So no one wants to walk out of a place and then trudge up a hill with shopping, you know, stuff, so, I mean, I would certainly look at, you know, you know, where does the relief, the terrain, the natural flow, you know, push you towards? Normally, it doesn't push you up a hill. You know, and, and that area there does have some rolling hills. The envelopes, how close the, the buildings are going to be together is also going to desire people to go there and walk, you know, just the connectivity of, you know, Pinehurst, Southern Pines, any small town that's been revitalized in North Carolina, or the south, or even, you know, in the north. And then, you know, keeping those, the... And then, you know, keeping those, the, the active frontage, okay, facing each other and not facing away is probably going to be important as well. You know, don't want to be at the bottom, certainly don't want to be at the top, but I think the contour is going to dictate how someone wants to further develop that.
You're right. And Block O, there was a lot of, there is a lot of contour there, and, you know, we've had that discussion, you know, is it, you know, the houses along, how are they going to develop along Cadell? And where are you looking back down to, and how does that work? So I think we, we, that, can you put a bunch of manor lots that way? And how do, what does that look like versus a townhouse, things like that? So, yeah.
I think you're going to be surprised on Cadell Road, what really can be done. And I think it's really going to, when that development comes before staff or whoever, I think the elevation heights of the buildings at, at that point in time, not the building itself, but where, where it starts to land, topography, is something to take a look at. And I don't know where we'll be. I mean, at, you know, someone has, if they provide plans to just build a house on there, but there's, there's a couple of different ways to build a house on that slope, and it depends on how much money someone wants to put into the actual...
That's why the area hasn't been developed over the last hundred years, too, is because it's not as appeasing terrain as other places.
Yeah, but a builder's going to look at that lot and not see the same problems that you and I see. So...
Yeah, he's looking at the lot and the dollar amount that's associated with it. He's not going to live there.
Bring in a lot of dirt would be number one. You could build a basement, you could build a, a back entry garage, and honestly, quite frankly, you can just build on it. You know, you actually could come below the, the grade of the, the road currently. I mean, it just really depends on how much money they want to put into the lot prep.
What might be helpful, and we'll pull these, we can pull the original plans and just show you what, what that, what the townhouse development looked like, and just, just to share that with you, what had been previously considered and where they had actually started, because the infrastructure's in place right now. So we'll pull, we'll pull the townhouse plans. All right. What other questions might we want to discuss on regulating plan right now? As, you know, we're going to, we're going to be, we'll circle back to this several ti, I think several times during this process, because this is a key document for us.
I guess the only question I would have is, as this continues to move forward, how is this going to be enforced through zoning and code? Okay.
Overlay, we'll put an overlay on this area. Anything else? Good? All right. Let's move on to the, the heart of what we came here to talk about tonight, which is the architectural standards, commercial architectural standards in particular. And why can I never find? Why does that, oh, there, never mind. Don't close that out. Why is it? I might want to close it. No, good. All right. So let's start with the corner and, corner lot and front elevation standards. As you started to read through some of these, some of the, some of the notes and discussion points, lot, you know, whether it's a mid-block lot, a corner lot, whatever, and the frontage, they become very important. So you start to see some of the standards, and we, we start to talk about, okay, if you have a storefront, we want you to be on a frontage elevation. Or the, and, and there's other design requirements that go to non-frontage elevation. So what the, what the diagram that you're looking at right here just shows, it kind of shows what the lot hierarchy is, what's considered a corner lot, which is understandable, and then what, you know, what a mid-block lot is. So on the, on the top, you know, you're seeing, you're seeing what a commercial, kind of a commercial land use pattern is, and to the south, what a, what a, or to the bottom, what a residential land use planner, uh, pattern is. And you can see the elevation types. So if you look, if you look on the, the diagram itself, it's, this is a frontage elevate, frontage entry elevation, meaning that's where you're, where your storefront is. So if you're sitting on the corner, we're going to apply, we could apply various standards to that frontage entry elevation versus the frontage non-entry elevation. And so, so that, that's kind of discusses how, how that comes together. Corner lot, so if we go to the next page, any question, any questions on the diagrams on this one? It's pretty self-explanatory. Any basic questions on that? Okay. So then we go to page two, which comes up to the, the corner lot and frontage elevation standards. So as, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to read through this, and we'll go through it kind of individually, because this is important, too. As noted on the previous page, given the importance of the public realm, and, and public realm, that's, that's, it's an important concept in form-based codes, is, is that relation between the building frontage and the street itself. That's the public realm. That's the important part. That's what a lot of zoning codes miss, is that public realm, and what helps create place is really, is, is what you do with, between the building frontage and, and the sidewalk and in the street. So, as noted on the previous page, given the importance of public realm and village place and proximity to village center, certainly, certain lots require particular attention due to their locations. And, and then we do establish a bunch of criteria for, for these corner lots with these special elevations. So I'm not going to read through all these. Does anybody, do, do anybody have any specific questions on any of the standards that have been, that have been proposed in that regard? Because if I sit here and read, we're not going to get out of here until eight o'clock, which I'm willing to do.
Only noting that, you know, in the second column there, the paragraphs about window grills and the, and the porches reference residential to the extent that's allowed by NC law.
Correct. You're correct. There's two, and there's two strategies on that.
I saw the asterisk down below, yeah.
And, but there's, there's two strategies on it. There's one, you know, can we do something through the historic standards? Could we apply it somewhere through our historic district? Because we know that if it's in a historic district, has to go through the HBC and get a COA. The other way to potentially do it is if we get somebody into a conditional zoning situation and require, so they want to change the zoning to something to allow for residential, we could potentially, we could ask to apply these standards to that, to, to that applicant. So that, that, that would be the other route, that we could actually apply these standards...
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
To the person. So anybody else have any, any specific questions in this, on these standards? They're standards. So if there's any questions, please, I've looked at them a hundred times. So I think they make sense, but if there's something that's unclear to any of you, please, please raise a question, ask a question. You can see on the right, you know, with those pictures, what, you know, what corner, what they're kind of referring to. So you can see the, so you can see the corner, the corner shop here in Dugan's. So you can see it's got, it's got kind of two elevations sitting on that corner. So that's kind of what we're, what, you know, what the thought is trying to achieve on the corner lot. So here's your primary elevation, and then here would be your secondary elevation. I think the important, the other important part, when you start to talk about it, is this particular provision talking about landscaping. Landscaping shall be required along the foundation of all frontage elevations in a layered, varied, and naturalistic pattern, except for hardscape, meaning, you know, where you're going to have areas outdoor for seating, things like that, extends to the building facade. And we talked about trim, windows, grills, head features, all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of good standards in here. And here's another one that, that comes into play, is the porch standards. So if you look on a porch on a, and again, we're getting back to whether we can record it or not, on a residential corner lot, if a porch is installed on the frontage entry elevation, the porch shall wrap around the corner on two, on two structural bays to the non-frontage elevation. So what would happen is, and I don't have a diagram on this one to, to express that. Basically, you got a, if you're on a corner lot, you have a, you have the porch going around the front, it just wraps around the corner a specified distance. Close that out? No, yeah, good. See? You can jump in. So, so the diagram, this diagram here on the, on the previous page shows, shows how that, what that concept is like. So it wraps, so here's a porch on a residential. It wraps two bays around, see, one, two bays around the corner. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on this section? All right. Architectural design overview. So this is chapter five, and, and the chapter five is broken out into two real sections. One is the commercial and one is the residential. There's going to be some things that apply to both commercial and, and we'll try and apply on the residential. But this is, this is the meat of the document with respect to architectural standards. So this is going to tell you what type of fenestration you have to have, what return you have to have on the, you know, what details, all that kind, all that kind of stuff is in here. So this, the components of this are building types, and we talked a little bit about the building types, and I think we're going to want to revisit some of those things, because the building types, I think we can beef up some of the standards in the building types, especially with respect to multiple family. And then we have the 5.3 material and element standards. And as part of this, each set of material and element standards include general provisions followed by criteria that apply to specific building components, including exterior walls, building elements, porches, stoops, bays, decks, roofs, doors and windows, and then frontage yard components. So as we go through this, so here are the building types, and we won't revisit that right now, so you can, so you can ta, so you can, you know, when you look at the regulating plan, you can key a, a certain type of building type to the regulating plan, and we establish various standards for each of those, for each of those building types, over and above the other standards that we go through. So here, section 5.3, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go over every single, every single criterion in here. So if there's, if there's something, these are the general provisions that apply to all commercial and mixed-use buildings. So you can see we have corner lot, corner, we again, talk about corner lots. We talk about commercial mixed-use buildings fronting onto the primary street. Bullet four, building shall line at the front facade along the bo, along the block. Go down to this bullet, which, we're going to number these, we're going to change these so that, so we can actually follow and go, maybe, sure. Oh, right here, this page, page 58. Page 58. 58. Page 58.
Well, it's architects, page 58. It's clearly not our page 58. No, no, I, I, I see the lower left says 58.
It's page 58 down here, so...
Okay.
All right. So if we go through there, we, we look at the bullets, and again, we're going to change the bold format, because it needs to, we need to put ones, or twos, or threes, or As, or Bs, or Cs. If you go down to one, two, three, four, bullet five, "Commercial structures exceeding 60 feet in any horizontal dimension shall set up an implicit or explicit system of bays." Implicit bays use window groupings in the base, and explicit use columns or pilasters. And if you go over to figure one on the right side, you can see what that concept does. So if you get over 60 feet in width, then you're, you're looking at having, requiring these kind, this, this type of archi, this type of, you know, archi, architecture, or this type of, this type of design.
So as we go through this, my perception is that I have never seen this type of detailed architectural requirements. At least I cannot find it in any other form-based code that I've looked at. Clearly, the consultant had an architect on, on staff, and they chose to include architectural standards, including materials and so forth.
Those were added by me.
You know, window sizes and, and all the rest of that. It seems a little beyond what I would normally expect in a form-based code. Can you comment on that?
Well, architectural guidelines are part, are, are parts of some form-based codes. We've just, we've, we've gone a little, because we don't have a lot of, a lot of architectural requirements in, in our code right now, we thought it, we thought it appropriate to add form, because the architecture helps create the form. It help, well, it helps accentuate the form, it helps, you know, it helps...
So I assume that we're also going to talk at some point in time about, you know, building placement, build-to-line setbacks, minimum and maximum lot widths, minimum, maximum building widths and so forth. So there's a whole number of other criteria that we have to yet...
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, but you can't look, we got it, we...
No, I understand we're focused on one thing at a time. But this is my comment, is that I've never seen such level of granularity, granularity.
Granularity.
Granular, easy for you to say.
Yes.
You know, in, in a form-based code. And I'm kind of surprised that we, we haven't.
This is an ad, this is an ad. I, we, because there, because I, there was a lack of architecture, we, we don't have a lot of ar, if you look at the Village Mixed District standards, we have, we have a small section of, of architectural standards. This really, I think, really enhances that and becomes that much more prescriptive in, you know, what we potentially want development to look like in, in, in the community, in, in these particular areas.
It's hard to argue that these aren't good standards. I mean, to tell you the truth, I think in going through them, they look good, but are we going to create an environment where we're going to have a lot of sameness, in the sense that if they all meet these exact requirements, we're going to end up with a lot of the same type of buildings? They're going to look the same? I know it specifies they shouldn't look the same quite in, in some places, but are we forcing, you know, kind of a monolithic look in this area that we may, the unintended consequence, that may be the unintended consequence?
Well, we, there, there's a requirement here that it can't look the same as buildings, I think...
Can't be, it can't be the same color, the same facade as a building two, two down, whatever that means.
Two down and two across, or...
Maybe there is a lot of flexibility in, you know, just using the illustration here, maybe there is a lot of flexibility in what you can do. I mean, I would agree with you, Jack. It looks like you're, you have a choice, and it's one choice, and it's my choice. Whereas, there's probably a lot of good choices that are in theme where you're trying to go. I think maybe the illustration only fixes, you know, has us fixated on only one example. But, you know, so that may be something like, here's choices or ideas. You know, this is okay, this is okay, this is okay. We won't, you know, this is not okay. You know, maybe giving more options or a wider, you know, aperture on what is within the realm of possible as a choice. But I, I would agree, it does steer you to, if it's not like this, it's not good.
Right. I have a question.
No, just, and let me respond to that. Because if you go to, go to the next page, if you go to page 60, which is, I don't know what page it is in here, but it's page 60 on, on the bottom, on the bottom left, we start, it's not, it's not all the same. I mean, we can use different, different materials. So you start to looking at, "Walls shall be stone, cast stone, architectural, concrete block, brick, wood clamber, siding or, or cemented siding. Foundation walls shall be stone, brick, or poured concrete with a, with a brick pattern." So then we start to talk about the, the techniques over in that right-hand column. So I think if you're tell, if, if there's not a lot of permutations that you can't do with a building based on these standards, I think there, I think there are. It's just that's an overall standard, you know, not just similar to, you know, what we have for the historic guidelines, that we, we say shoulds and things like, we do have some, some guidelines. I think these, these are more than, these are, these are, these are going to be the, the standards that you have to design to. If we think that's too rigid, if we think we're being too rigid, then we can certainly, we can certainly back that off if we don't think that these, if we don't think that these are, are, are good guidelines.
I didn't disagree with them, but I just found it alarmingly detailed in some respects. For example, in the signs, it was very specific as to the, the sign. I was really surprised as to how detailed this was for this type of document.
This is about, this is about the first time I've, I think I've heard that in my time here, that we're being too prescriptive with our, with our code, based on some of the, based on some of the comments that I've heard, you know, in my past.
But at the same time, I mean, it's one of, one of the features, if you will, of Pinehurst, is it's somewhat eclectic, you know, as far as the downtown and the, and you walk around the community, there is a variety of architectural styles. And, and whether this forces a certain architectural style in a large area, I would be semi-concerned with, let me put it that way.
And, and there's going to be a difficult balance that we're going to have to strike to allow for differing types, styles, design, et cetera, but be prescript enough, objective enough, that A, someone knows what we're asking them to do, but then more importantly, that we can administer. that A, someone knows what we're asking them to do, but then more importantly, that we can administer. So it just, that is going to be a tough balance to find because you don't have to go two blocks, you know, around this area and see a dozen different type of style. And, and we like all of it right now, currently.
And I'm not sure this really specifies a style, because it doesn't really specify a style. It has a standard with, you know, what the wall should look like, things, and gives, and it gives you some, it gives you some latitude. But I think if, if you walk around downtown Piners, I don't know if anything that's in here, I can't think of anything that would be potentially prohibited that wouldn't go based on that standards. The good thing about that is if you don't, if there's a lack of a standard right now, then that opens the door for, you know, a variety of things that you might not want. So I'd, you know, when, when it comes to a special area like, you know, like we're, we're trying to create, I guess on the front end, I, I'd rather be a little bit more prescriptive to see how that works, and over time, to see if we need to, to take our, you know, if we need to make an adjustment. But going into it before we've even started, I mean, we, we should get some opinions from, from some, some in the development community potentially. But I think, you know, I, I think it's a good set of, I think it's a good starting point, that we can always, if, if we've gone too far, we can always back off. I just think, yes, it goes a lot further than, than the current standards in the, in the village, the Village Mixed Use District, there's no doubt about it.
A lot further than the HPC guidelines, too.
I think you'll find when we get into the form-based codes that it will include signage. But this isn't calling for, like on page 60, the illustration of windows, six over six in each one.
No, we don't get.
It's not dictating that. So, I mean, there is variance. All this is really illustrating is the, the ratio of the width to the height, which is most important, more than, I mean, nobody wants them all to be the same style, you know. I mean, we're not talking about roof lines, are we?
We're going to talk, we're going to talk about roof lines, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, it's acceptable, but.
There's not, there's no, there's no, it's not a never mind, it's, we should, we should have this discussion.
I understand.
I think it's a healthy discussion.
About the process of this and maybe the steps along as this was written, and how many stopping points maybe you two as staff got to review and change verbiage and to customize it towards our village? I know it was a long process for it, and I know it was very beating. What I'm trying to get to is how much input do we have from you two in these words versus really an architect that was hired by this, this group? And what I'm just, what I'm just thinking that our job may be is to customize and make sure that we get to something that reflects our village. And if that is the case, then that's our process, and that's what we're doing. Then I would just ask and urge us as board members to, even as we start to take a look at this and think about it in our minds, and as we kind of develop our own thoughts, points, and questions, I mean, just to make sure that we email that. We've already had a board member email it to staff. Yeah, thank you. And, and thoughts and points, because I think that's the whole idea. And I don't mean to jump over your answer, but I think that's, if this is the process, and it's our job to customize it to us, then we should take our time and we should make sure that we're, as these questions come up from Louise, if they come up this weekend, please form an email and send it to staff.
We could, yeah, we can always, we can always take things out. And we have done this as the process has, has gone on. We've taken things out that we, from our standpoint, we didn't think it was, we didn't think that it would be applicable, things like that. So, I mean, I think if you go into, you know, we're starting to talk about design and we're, and you go into this page, which is this, which page is this? Page 59, we start to talk, there, there's a standard set up, you know, for these storefronts, whether it's storefronts. But if you look at that, we talk about, you know, this image, it talks about awning, you know, where the awning should be, what the soffit panels are, things, things like that, where signage could potentially be, you know. If you go to the, the top, it talks about where the entry should be and what should be above that entry, things like that. So it is, there's no doubt, it's, we're requiring something that's very prescriptive because we're trying to promote, you know, a very high-quality design. We think this promotes high-quality design.
And I think it's okay to say, I'm sorry to.
Well, one question I have is once, I guess, once you make the decision to put the, the regulations in place for how, how the development needs to come about, if you, if we find that it's too prescriptive or too limiting, and everything ends up looking the same, and you lose some of the charm from the surrounding areas that we're trying to kind of pull down into this new, small area, how, how difficult is it to adjust it to, I guess, make it less prescriptive at that point to adjust accordingly?
We just, we, we would make an adjustment to the zoning ordinance that would be applied through the form, through the overlay district. So it's, it's just a matter of amending the PDO.
Okay.
And if something, and we do that, I mean, we do that routinely. You'll be, you'll be doing a, we'll be doing a public hearing on September 1st for a PDO amendment, which I'll talk about later. So it's, it's not that difficult, it's just that you have to go through the process, and we, we make those changes all the time.
I think it's okay to say also that, I'm, I'm just going to assume that our PDO was considered as each of these were written, but we've already found some possible conflicts involved with it. So as the process goes involved, we're going to search for those and define as well. Is that, is what I'm assuming?
The conflicts are going to be more when you start to look at setbacks, the base zoning district, the uses, things like that. That's where, that's where some of your conflicts are going to be. We don't have a heavy set of architectural standards, we just don't. So there's not going to be, for, for the standards that you're looking at, there's not going to be a lot of, there's not going to be any, we don't see any conflict with the current code because we are actually creating something here.
And, and that's where that overlay is, is that such a useful tool? You just say that this overlay applies, period, unless, you know, stated elsewhere in the code, right? Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up with similar illustrations, same templated verbiage that the next city and town that the design collective is going to work with. So that, that's where I'm at. And if, and if it's our job to make sure that we don't, then that's fair. And I, and I want to make sure that we provide the board plenty of time to do that, so.
Correct. Next page, on this page, what you see, which is page 59. This actually establishes some, there's an actual standard that we're creating for storefront and signage. Jack did refer to it before. So this is, you know, what those, what, it talks about what the construction materials are, what the, what the construction techniques are, you know, things like storefront glass shall be clear, storefront glazing shall have a minimum of eight inches above sidewalk grade because you don't want the glass going right down to, right down to the sidewalk. Things like storefront entry doors shall recess the minimum of 30 inches and have an awning installed above, things like that. That is where we're really getting to the, to the, to the look of, and it does talk about awnings as well, about what a storefront would look like. The next page.
Has there been, and this could be a silly question, but a review of the existing, I guess, historic commercial area in the village and the characteristics of all the buildings there? And seeing how much of that has carried on, because I, I think that's what you're getting at, Jeremy, is how much of that charm and character and what makes the village special is appearing in this plan right now to carry over those characteristics into the small area? And how much of it is just a design collective template that they include?
Well, I'm comfortable assuming that they spent a lot of time, and I think they did as we, as we all heard from them on many occasions. But when we get down to the, the verbiage, I just want to make sure that, that we take our time to really take a look at, that's all.
That's why we're going through part of this process. I mean, I think, you know, staff is, staff has gone through these several times, and we've looked at it, and we've, and we've modified it. And when we're looking at it, you know, Alex is, Alex is basing a lot of his, his experience, some of the adjustments that we made based on some of the experience that he's had into the Village of Piners. So we've looked at some of the, the construction standards, and we said, should we have precast walls? Is a precast wall appropriate thing? We peeled that out. So it's things like that that we were looking at, that, you know, that we've actually, that we, that we've peeled out because, you know, from, from staff's perspective, we didn't think, you don't go around the, the village and see a lot of precast walls. So it, it just, you know, when we're looking at the standards, we're looking at, we looked at each and every one of these standards. Now, sometimes, yeah, do, do we miss some things? And that's why we're going through this process. But we went through each and every standards, standard, and we tried to think of examples that we've seen in, in this community. And where it wasn't, where we didn't think it was, there, it was a clear example or something that we wanted to promote, we would take it out, like the precast walls, things like that. Next page, page 60, talks about exterior walls. And then we, we talk about walls shall be stone, cast stone, architectural concrete block, brick, wood, siding or cemented siding. So you can see, you know, there's, there are some very prescriptive standards in here. If we're off on something, you know, that's what this process is about. If you look at some of the illustrations, here's the design concept that, that you'd have heavier materials over, under lighter materials. So if you look at figure 4 on the bottom, you can see heavier brick over a lighter brick. Or you go to the right, you have brick undersiding. So these are the concepts that we would, that, that would be codified as, as part of this process. And it talks about things like brick wa, you know, wood, wood clappard, or wood clappard or cemented siding shall have smooth finish and be a pre-finished, pre-painted, things like that. So again, we're not going to go over each and every one of these, one of these standards at this point because your eyes are going to glaze over, and I see they're glazing over right now. So. Building, so commercial, the next page, page 61, again, is building elements. So we talk about cornices, we talk about columns and posts. We talk about the types of, and, and I know we've heard this one, we talk about the types of columns that could, that should be, that should be allowed or permitted, things like that, you know, balconies, railings. So we, we talk a lot about that within this standard itself.
I just had this vision, and talking about what you're saying, we don't want it all to look the same and stuff. There's a neighborhood in Chapel Hill called Meadowmont. Any of you seen it? It's really nice, and I think it would look better than what we're looking at. It's got trees in front of the homes, it's got a Harris teeter in the middle of it, but you don't even realize it. It's got restaurants, and if you haven't seen it, you might want to go look at it because I think that's kind of what we're heading to versus some of these Maryland sub, whatever you want to call them, subdivisions are pretending like they're looking like we do. And that's my comment. So if any of you want to go up there, you know, take your better half, have lunch, whatever, it's really nice.
None of these architectural standards that you're looking at are things that aren't part of the village fabric right now.
But I'm just saying, this might be something for us to look at and say, hey, we like what they have there, we don't like what they have. And it's more North Carolina, more the, I think, New England kind of village, which is what we want to keep.
I, I think as we see communities like that, that are updated, that are current, and, and how they have developed in a sense, and I think that that's probably a lot of what we're talking about here in reality. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of these architects who write this thing are very brilliant, very smart. They understand how to emulate that look. And I have no doubt about, no doubt about this as well. My only point is just to make it relative to our community.
Right, and that's why I said, go look at that, because you'll see it's got a lot of trees. I mean, it's just different than some of this.
Look, we're not getting into landscaping on this, on this.
No, but it just gives that feel of the whole community versus this cold and more cold. Just go look at it.
Meadowmont now looks a lot different than it did when Meadowmont was first developed, too. Because it's, you know, 20 some odd years old now, so. I think that's part of the growing pain of new development like this is, yeah, in, in the beginning, it's going to look different. It's not going to be harmonious, but once it ages and, and, and kind of settles in with the existing footprint, you know, in two years, yeah, you're going to, this is the new part of town, this is the, you know, early 1900s Village of Pinhurst, but in 50 years, 60 years, once those trees have grown in, it's, I think that's what we're trying to look at.
Right, but also the way they've done it, where you don't really realize there's a big store or there's all these restaurants, it's just more a thing of what we're looking for. That's why I suggested, it's not, you have to do it, but I suggested it.
And I would assume that they have an architectural standard in place.
Oh, yeah, and, and their homes are not cheap, okay? Yeah, they're, they're townhomes and stuff, and you can't even tell that they're townhomes almost.
And, and I think that's, again, when you start to look at the allowances, the requirements, they're, you know, they're very, you're, you're allowed a latitude of different materials, but we become very prescriptive on windows, trim, you know, siding, things like that. If we don't like, if we think we're being over-prescriptive, we can always, we can always peel that back. But we ought, we ought to start with a lot and then peel that back if we don't feel that it's appropriate. So we can, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather take out than add to at this point. Next page, on page 60, on page 60, well, 60, we talk about exterior walls. And I'm actually on page 62. It's hard to maintain both of these. 62, we actually get into roofs, so we get into roof forms. And, you know, it, again, if we, we start to talk about what roofs are, if we go down to configurations, which is the first bullet under configurations, and this is where we might have to have some discussion. Roof shall be simple and symmetrically pitched and only in the configuration of gables, hips, and mansards. Shed roofs may be used on secondary massing elements or dormers. Flat roofs may be used to incorporate terraces, mechanical units, and green roof systems. So this is where we start to talk about what the, and you can see the diagrams on the right, you know, kind of what, you know, what some of the thoughts are. You know, we, we talk about what the pitch should be, or what the minimum pitch, things like that, on those roof lines. Talk about what the material should be, gutters, the type of gutter, things, things like that. Again, what are, what are, what are the thoughts on roofs? Any, any specific thoughts on roofs? And in particular, any, any flat roofs, anything like that, discussion?
We have, what do we have currently?
We don't really have, there, within the district itself, there's not a lot of flat roofs. There's not a lot, there's no flat roofs that I can think of as, as really the main building. Jack, do you think of anything that?
No.
The, the manor's got the north, south, they got the, they got little one-story wings, flat roof wings off either side of it within the district. But that's really, that's only really what I can think of, think about within the district itself. You go down Market Street, or you go down Cherokee, and I don't see any flat roofs.
A substantial part of this area is within the HPC, which the HPC guidelines discourages flat roofs. I think that's been.
And I don't think, if you look at the standard, it's not allowing it as a primary, it's not allowing it as a primary roof section. But I think it's something that I've actually highlighted, that I think we need to, that I need to revisit and maybe dial that back because the image, this image, I would like to adjust this image because it gives a, a different context when you see this image here. I don't like it, so I think, I think that can be adjusted because it looks like, I've, I've seen this in other communities, it's just that you're having a flat roof. It's almost, it's almost 50% of the elevation, and you're seeing it there.
You know, and the idea where it's talking about the balustrade or balustrade on a flat roof, that, it evokes to me, beginning to think about what they're doing in Southern Pines with sort of the rooftop bars or dining areas that they have in Southern Pines, which are fine. I, I just don't see them as being very Pinhurst, you know, like a rooftop bar or something like that.
Just something that we don't have currently, so why would, you know, why would we change the, or I guess add a part to the character that's not already part of what we have?
Right, it just doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me here.
Erin, to your point that you mentioned that over 50% of that building there would be a flat roof, kind of where you've got listed as a mechanical, you know, equipment screen. I've seen a lot of development recently, certainly commercial development, where the building will be built to the height and then the roof standards, and then that large, flat area. And in my mind, I'm trying to determine, was that, in, in being used for a restaurant situation, to a bar, to your point. And in my mind, what. situation, to a bar, to your point, and in my mind, when I drive by that, a new building, I'm thinking, did they do that to possibly skirt the flat roof ordinance of the area, or are they considering a deck, or are they considering a roof? Does that make sense what I'm, exactly the way that you've got?
And I think.
Our definition may be important there.
And this is really showing, what this image is showing is not so much a flat roof, it's showing how to hide mechanical equipment, is that's really what that is. So it's kind of, it's kind of, I need to adjust that, because I think it, it creates an image of something that we might want to portray or allow in this community, and I don't think, I don't think that is the case.
But I think your, your bottom right illustration is kind of the point that I'm bringing up, is a, a building with that, to where the left side of that building is, um, conforms to the roof structure of whatever the ordinance is, and then is that flat area, is that part of the roof, or is that a deck? And I think that's.
For that, that would be probably part of the roof.
Does the roof only apply to what's, uh, road frontage, what you're seeing from the front or the side, or is it, it has to be consistent the whole way?
Or what, what?
I was gonna, because, yeah, the, I, I think what, what's here, you know, some of the buildings, I'm trying to think of, I mean, they, they have that roof line, but then there may be flatter portions, like you're saying, to screen the mechanical equipment. Does that ha, like, do you have to have that roof all the way around, or if, say, the, the bottom right illustration here was on a corner, would that roof line go all the way around, or would you be seeing that flat space from the side? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Well, some of those roofs are almost very deceiving. You don't even see that utility area.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's an expensive roof and a lot of maintenance, you know, to, to do that, but yeah, they're, at ground level, it's almost hard to see. Looks like a regular pitched roof, unless you follow the roof line all the way up.
Yep. I agree.
I think, I think one of the things that I was trying to get.
Especially for restaurants, they're going to need that. Or it's going to come out, or their grease things are going to come out the side, or somewhere else that's going to be less attractive.
And I think that's why we're trying to get that as a secondary element, that's not visible, or it's not on the front facade. I think that's the intent, that if you're going to push it, you'd push it to the back of the structure, but I think that's something that, I made a note that we have to look into that a little bit more. Bullet two, if you look at bullet two as well, I mean, we, we still continue to get into it on the primary, and here, talk us a little bit more about it, Paul. On the primary structure, the pitch of the main roof shall be between eight twelve and fourteen twelve. Secondary roofs on the, on the principal structure, as well as the garage and link roofs, may have shower pitches, but shall relate to the principal structure. So I think the idea is that, that the principal structure is going to have, is going to have a pretty substantial pitched roof line, going back to, to a secondary structure. This is, this is very hard to go over, when, there's a lot of standards here, so if somebody has some other specific questions or any concerns, like Julia raised with the balustrades, please, please bring those up as I'm going through it. Next page, which is page sixty-three, uh, we talk about doors and windows, again, another prescriptive standard, uh, relating to the windows and the window placement. So if you look at, uh, the key here, you, you look at the two illustrations, it's showing how the windows should line up in the building facades. Two different, two different types, uh, above and below, figure seven and figure eight. But again, this, if you look at this, this pattern, this pattern is, is evident, we have this pattern within the community right now. So I think it's trying to, it's, it's trying to replicate or require that, replace, require that pattern within the community.
We can send you questions on specific wording that we don't understand.
Oh, please do. You can raise it.
I have a few of those.
Please do.
We, we did a lot of Googling when we were.
Yeah, I was going to say, as a non-architect, I've, there are a couple of things where I'm like, I don't know what that means.
No, we, we've had to do a little bit of that, too, and then when we, when we, when we Googled dork and Tuscan columns, then, then we really, oh, I think what, the Tuscan was round, was smooth, and dork was not, or right, vice versa. Uh, but yeah, we did a lot of that, we did a lot of Googling along the way.
I don't believe it. I think you guys know everything.
Uh, well, we know a lot, but when, even, even when it comes to architectural standards, you know, we're not an expert on architectural standards, we're just not. So that's really all I have for section five, uh, for the residential. So any other questions on that? I know there's, there's a lot, and this is very, it's very hard to go over.
One question I had is, um, the, the figures that are referenced in the text are not clearly included in the document, and so, like, for me, I was just saying to Jack, um, the last bullet on the left column of sixty-two, rake returns are required at gable ends, and shall have a two-foot minimum return of cornice trim. Aw. And so I want to see figure twelve A and twelve B to figure out what that means, and there is no figure twelve A and twelve B to guide me.
That's going to be in the residential section. I did actually make, I, I figured you would have went three bullets up, and figure eighteen and figure nineteen, we did hand.
Oh, I noticed those, too.
Because you don't, yeah, no, we, we did hand those out, so we, we gave you a handout on that, uh, figure twelve A and twelve B, that's, some, some of these are, are caught between two sections. We didn't want to do both commercial and residential in the same thing, because your eyes are glazing over now.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot, and this is very hard to, it's, it's hard to go over when there's so many prescriptive standards. I don't know how you did it during the historic guidelines, so. Um, any other, any other general questions on section five? I mean, please, please.
Let's talk about how this overlay will work with the HPC and the, I mean, the HPC can have requirements, but they can be more restrictive than the P D O, but they cannot be less restrictive, obviously. Um, it's the same application here, or this, this becomes part of the P D O, so the, um, HPC guidelines can be more restrictive than this, uh, but not less restrictive.
The HPC guidelines are not more restrictive than this.
And, and is that covering existing structures or new structures?
And I'm looking, and I'm looking from the existing code right now, because I, the commercial, the, the commercial historic standards are not as prescriptive as this, right?
Yeah, so, so Jack, how I've envisioned that is, this is, and, this is inherently going to become an initial part of the staff review of a proposal for an application for whatever applicable application there is, and then the COA application will also come. This will be like staff checking for setbacks, impervious, and, and so the staff analysis and staff report that is then forwarded to the HPC will be fairly comprehensive about what sections of this village place overlay, um, came into play with this review, in that it checks, you know, the, the window orientation, the material design, signage, all up and down, and the HPC standards are going to be a lot more, and we'll make sure before we're ever close to adopting any of these type of design standards here with the form-based codes, that there isn't anything that runs directly afoul of those. But they're going to be a little more overarching and subjective, where these are going to be very, very prescriptive, as we've already noticed that. So it'd just be part that, yes, it does check this box, however, the HPC will still need to determine that the design is compatible with the district and other structures in the area, that's their standard, that it is of similar materials and yada, yada, yada.
But the, the HPC cannot override or relax regulations that are covered by either the P D O, and this becomes part of the P D O, that's correct, right?
Correct, absolutely.
As, as the staff members who would be implementing this, I know, I, I assume, Darren, you're feeling pretty comfortable about your ability to navigate the material. Alex, I mean, is, is this something that becomes overwhelmingly difficult and slows down the, the speed in which the office can process material? I mean, it's a lot.
It, 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 and I think at any point, when you're adopting a new regulation, you're adopting more regulation, then yes, we're doing more work. And we have two new planners, um, that's going to be, become part of their everyday life if something like this is adopted. There, there are other changes to the P D O we're going to do. You guys remember the buffer development ordinance? That has added some time to our reviews. Um, you know, we're looking in-house already at doing some evaluations on that, and what can we do, if anything, to make it more efficient, however, still meet the objective and goal that was set out for? But yes, yeah, it will add work, it will add a review, it's like if, when you're a new staff member looking at our P D O for the first time, it's a shock, it takes some time to get acclimated to it, and then you'll be like me, we just wake up in the middle of the night and start shouting references out, you know? It becomes part of your second nature.
Hard to hear that.
Me, too. Um, so it, it, yes, it will, it will be uncomfortable, it will be clunky at first. We have to make sure that we get to a certain level of comfort with it before we can tell this board or tell village council that we recommend you adopt this.
So to follow on Julia's statement, though, I mean, how about with the, someone that, the developers, or someone who wishes to, you know, build something, to what extent is this going to add additional, significant additional work on their part? I mean, they're going to have to have a lot of detail relative to materials and, and so forth, uh, not just conceptual plans, they have to be quite specific, is that correct?
Yeah, there's some middle requirements are obviously going to, that checklist is going to grow, right? But, but for them, sometimes they love that, or they, I wouldn't say they love that, they, they like the fact that they know what box they have to check. So we know, this is what the village has told us they want it to look like, and we've designed it to look like that.
They also have a choice. You know, they also, their choice is to either abide by them or build somewhere else. You know, no one's forcing them to go do that.
But let's also look at it from a perspective, we don't have that type of activity that we're going to be inundated with ten of these buildings coming through at any one time. It's going to be sporadic, it's going to be, you know, it's just, you know, look at how long it took Trotter Hills to, we get one or two applications in a year in Trotter Hills right now. So it's, I don't think, you know, we're just not going to see that intensive an activity that we can't handle that.
So the way, just to use as an example, we've had comments in the past that have been emailed to staff, just to use an example, Matt, this is a good format that you would like to receive, I guess, and so what was handed out was Matt's comments that he submitted, you know, pre-meeting, and I just want to encourage everybody to do so, because I, I hope it's beneficial from staff to get these. And then I, I think the steps would be that staff would then pass these out during our next meetings or our next work sessions, is that right? If anybody sends any, anything in as far as some comments? But do you need us, are these being considered just from, just from him submitting them to you? You don't need us to do any sort of restating this or anything like that, right?
No, I, I, I think this is, this is great, we had, and Jack, you've done it, too, you've provided some, some comments to us, so it, you know, this is very helpful, and they, they should be part of, part of the discussion, we can handle, you know, we have, we haven't gone over these, um, but that, we can answer all these questions.
But I think that's my question, is would you ever need us to go through them, or is this something that's being considered, and then as board members, maybe that we bring them up? I just want to make sure it's a good process.
No, I think that'd be great, yeah, I think we should do that. I think this.
Or, or, you know, especially if you look at Matt's comments, and, you know, you, you completely disagree, or if, or if you're like, you know, like, yes, I, you know, he must have read my mind, so we get some sort of concurrence from, from the group. If it's one way or the other, then.
Process, from being process-oriented here and thinking about this, I mean, again, a lot of information, right? A lot of stuff, I mean, just that, a lot of things to consider, and as we consider this and we go home and all of a sudden some things click, that may be the time to send you a thought, and I just want to make sure it's a process.
It's probably going to take some time for it to sink in, and, and look over it a couple, I mean, we, when we did an initial review, we had to come back and do another review, and, you know, and sink, let it sink in a little bit, and, you know, random thoughts pop in, you know?
It's constantly on a review for us, so we're, we're constantly looking through this thing, we're constantly trying to make adjustments and things like that, so if there's something that just seems out of place, or something that we're missing, and again, if we're going way too far and becoming way per, way too prescriptive, tell us, and we can talk about it, and we can always, you know, we can always peel it back.
I would like to, just looking at Matt's comments, I think the gist of what he and Matt, when we see it next, if I'm summarizing incorrectly, then correct me. But it's, it seems to be saying, standards that are currently in the village, pull those down to this small area, but those, the, the specifically building materials, um, you know, where, where we see things that don't exist currently, is there any reason to expand the, I guess, what's, what's allowed in this area, or do we just keep it with what's already in place? So, um, you know, light requirements, like, like he's mentioning, restricting to the, the current, um, current regulations, I think is important to, to keep in mind, rather than expanding what, what would be available there.
I mean, Matt, Matt does go into things like, do we want to allow architectural concrete black, block or cemented siding as construction materials?
And I, and that's because it's not currently, or, or if those things aren't currently appearing in the village, should we allow that in this new area? I think that's what I pull from these comments.
Correct. Flat roofs, you know, things like that. So he's, he's, he's gone through his section pretty well. So yeah, you know, if there's other questions out there like this, we should have that discussion. We don't have to have it now, we can have it at a future meeting.
I think, I think it could be thought-provoking to other members of the board as well, to make sure that we're reading each other's comments that may get emailed in, just like Jack's from a couple of weeks ago.
It's a conversation starter.
Yes, it's a thought. So somebody with the experience of, of Matt, you know, his, you know, his ability to take a look at this stuff may spawn someone else's, um, their talents and the reason they're sitting on this board to speak about something different, and vice versa.
And then, of course, the regaling plan, we're going to make the adjustments based on the conversation that we had here, and the misses that we had, and then we'll have to circle back to this whole discussion on active frontage, and try, try and give you some options on active frontage, because I think this is one of the more important, this is one of the, the most important part of that form, of the form-based code, is this regulating plan, so we've got to get this right. Other than that, I, if we, if there's no other general questions, we can end early today.
Maybe with homework, or have some sort of idea of what we need to be prepared to come back and go through in two weeks.
I was going to ask, what's the next steps? What's the meeting for the eighteenth going to look like?
Well, the, the, the next meeting, we would talk, we would move into the, into the residential standards, so the resident, so it'd be, it'd be the other part of the section, section five, so it'd be residential, but we can also revisit, you know, you've given, we've got an overview of what we did in commercial, so we can, you can take a look at that, and we can talk about these commercial comments. So take Matt's, take kind of Matt's inspiration, come up with some questions, and let's knock it out and.
For the next one, can we plan on having those, the, the townhome plans?
Yeah.
Helpful.
Those, and I guess the, because HPC is not currently more prescriptive than this, but the list, any list of building materials that show up in there, or?
Yeah, there are, there are prohibited materials and so forth.
Or things that might make sense to carry over.
It's a rather lengthy document, similar to a P D O in a way.
Yeah, this, it, it is very.
Well, I mean, Eric, Alex knows it very well, and, and I have a passing understanding of it, so, uh, I think we can identify those where it is a serious issue.
And I think we've tried.
Really different.
I think we've tried to do that as we've gone through this, so, and that's why it's valuable to have Alex as part of this process.
I, I think, too, it might not hurt if you guys have some time, you know, take a stroll through the center, take a look, yes, walk around, see, see the sides, the outside, don't trespass if you're not supposed to, of course, I'm not advocating for that, all right? But, um.
Yeah, wear your, wear your name tags.
Well, and I think it's okay for us to throw things against the wall and just see if they stick. Some of the stuff may not make sense to you as staff, but I think it's important for us to bring up at certain times as well. I'm sorry.
Just clearly will be a process dividing by two, we'll never get to zero, but, uh, as close as we can, I guess. close as we can, I guess.
So for the sake of the agenda, it, it looks like that we went from new business into general businesses as well, and we've covered the Village Place Regulating Plan version two in our conversation tonight as well.
And we have some homework to do and some adjustments to do on that, because we're gonna revisit that again, which we should do.
Okay.
We're gonna revisit this, commercial.
Circle back to this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think it's important. I mean, as you said, as you've seen our eyes glaze over, I think some of this stuff's gonna start to spark.
I can't make it interesting, it's very hard, it's very hard to make this interesting.
Well, I think we're all interested, and I think that, you know, again, as, as all of us are on this board for various reasons, for various different knowledge bases, then I think some of this stuff's gonna start to click, and I don't want it to be too late for us to maybe bring it back up to you.
So, you know, in the outline you gave us as far as meeting and what would be covered and dates, we are still gonna be working on architectural standards, is that correct?
For next week? Yeah.
Okay.
I'd say as far as codes go, municipal ones aren't that bad, you know? They're entertaining compared to other codes.
Well, and you'll be...
Better than, there's a really low, low bar there, but, you know, it's, there's some good stuff, yeah.
What other topics do we have as a board?
I, I appreciate you hanging in there with me on this, this is, it's a lot, I understand.
It is a lot, this has been a long process, and, and there's been a lot of investment, not only just in time, but in, you know, fiscal investment from our village, so it's important for us all, and I know that this is a years-long process, I mean, you know, so, and we're just getting, yeah, we're just getting started, so I think it's important for us to make sure that we take it serious. What else, guys? Anything else from anybody? Okay, so then I'll point out. Alex?
Alex, why don't you do it? No?
Make the statement.
All right, yeah, on, on the first, right, September 1st, we'll be, the regular scheduled meeting, public, we'll be holding a public hearing on PDO amendments regarding the, the short-term discussion that we've been having with, with the council, so we'll be moving forward with proposed modifications to the ordinance on September 1st, so it'd be...
So those will be PDO amendments...
Correct.
That will be done through an ordinance that the council passes, potentially.
That you'll forward up to them after, so the ordinance, the, the proposal that we'll be bringing towards you, forward, forward to you, is gonna be based on the discussions that we've been having with council for, for the past few months. So we think that we're in a pretty good form right now, we're gonna move that forward, that's actually in, I think, I think it was up there in the last work session, the, the basic format for the PDO, so that is gonna be moving forward to you. There'll be some, be some minor adjustments made to it, just some editing, but that, and it will be moving forward to you.
It will be in the form of PDO amendment, text amendment, or amendment to the PDO.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And is our role editorial, where we're making sure the language is clear, and is implementing the intentions of council, or is our role substantive?
Yes, I mean, your, your, your role is to make a recommendation based on what the comprehensive plan says, based on recommendation given to you by staff, which is largely gonna be given based on the direction that we've received from the village council, and, and the hours and the meetings that staff has had from their input given to us, and the ever-so-important public comment that you receive.
A public, at the public hearing?
Correct.
Correct.
Any constitutional law involved there?
Well, there might, you might wanna, again, that's where varying backgrounds can help, yes.
And, and to, to clarify, when you say from the public, and Jack added at the public hearing, I've heard from the public outside at the public hearing, is that your main to the conversation as well?
It's a legislative public hearing, so you are not bound by only quote-unquote evidence or testimony, or whatever that's been given to you in the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
You're an advisory body, so, you know, whatever you recommend based on that ordinance, as a group, that's your recommendation, you can...
When will we have that to review? Will it come out with the regular agenda, or can we get a copy of the draft?
We'll have an update after next week.
Yeah.
We can probably share based on if it, if there's discussion at the council meeting next Tuesday, which is the only meeting of, of the month of August, I believe.
What you can do is, if you go to the last council work session, there, the draft, the draft is in there, that, that draft is in there that we're, that will be moving forward in that general context.
It may be a good idea for us to review that last meeting, certainly for searching out that draft and, and maybe beginning our thoughts there.
We'll, we'll make a, we'll make a note by close of next week to give you the latest version of that. So be thinking of your commitments for September 1st, if, you know, we're establishing a quorum is gonna be very important, and voting for, for such will be very important. Eat a good, it will be, it will probably be a long evening, I'd imagine, and it, and it should be, it should be a topic that, you know, we spend some time on, so, and that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to deliberate until midnight, if, you know, there's options to continue, table it, et cetera.
But I will definitely be here on the, on the 9-1 meeting, there's a possibility that I'm gonna miss the 8-18 meeting, I've already discussed it with Jack, and it's almost certain that I will be missing the, the first week of October meeting, so just throwing that out there.
Anyone here know of? Okay.
Well, for the 8-18.
Off? I will be present.
And, you know, that is the regular scheduled meeting, understand, off meetings are, maybe could be a little tough to meet, so usually, most of us have that already, that first Thursday of the month marked, so.
With that said, any other comments, questions, thoughts, questions from staff, anything at all?
None, none of those, but I have a motion for you.
I, I'm, I'm willing to accept that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I hear a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion by David and a second by Jules, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you all.